Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Aliria.
Good morning. With the condition of the world these days, I would like to start the meetings with a moment of silent reflection on world peace and guidance for our world leaders in these troubled times. Thank you. Would you please stand, pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask my colleagues, I see Judge Horvath is here, if we could, he is scheduled under new business, but I would ask if we could move him up so that if he has any other business, he can attend to his business. And I have to leave by 10:00, so I would like to hear what he has to say.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we go through, up through number eight and then have him speak? That way you can, because if you have to leave, you at least participate in that part of the business.
Okay.
I think there's issues, because that won't take more than 10 minutes.
Okay, that's.
Just in case this discussion lasts longer, then.
You have a few minutes?
Is that okay? You wait about 10? Okay. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Okay, under resolutions, I need a motion to approve the Job and Family Services Bills repayment.
So moved, second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved, second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
There was a transfer number eight of 15 that wasn't signed by any of the Commissioners.
Which one was that?
On the carpeting for the health district.
Yeah, I was a little bit concerned with that. I didn't see any proof of need, for one thing, and being that they're contemplating a move, I'm wondering if we should put like $30,000 or $38,000 into carpeting? And then they may move in a few months or within six months or a year, and then the renovation would cause us a need for new carpet.
I'm not sure I saw that. You said it wasn't signed by the Commissioners.
Yeah, it wasn't signed by any of the Commissioners. If we could, I mean, I'll second the motion as long as we, it doesn't include number eight of 15.
And being that that's discretionary funding from solid waste, and they're also contemplating a move, I mean, I don't know if we should put $38,000 into that, and there's a possibility that they may need the $38,000 for their move.
Guess I didn't see any of these transfers. I thought I had reviewed all the board business, and I have not.
So, I made the motion. I will. I withdraw my motion, and let's start over again, okay?
I'll withdraw my second. I'll withdraw my second. I'll make a motion to approve the transfers except for number eight of 15.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
There is one advance for $30,000 to the Charles Berry Baskel Bridge, and that will be paid back when the old debt money is received.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd authorize various personal actions, as indicated.
If you don't mind, we could, at this point, I just can read off what.
Judge Horvath, I know that you wanted to address the board, that you have an issue. Would you please go up to the podium, state your name, spell your last name, just for the sake of the media here?
Madam, Ms. Vassie and Blair and Mr. Commissioner Moore. My name is Frank Horvath, H-O-R-V-A-T-H, and I'm currently the Lorraine County Probate Court Judge. And I'm here to request that the Commissioners reconsider their position on moving the Lorraine County Probate Court to the new Justice Center Administration Building. I have been discussing this matter with the Architects and the Administration regarding the configuration of the new proposed Lorraine County Probate Court and the new justice system. I've received a communication by way of letter dated December 11, 2002, which stated that the Board was unable to commit additional funds to changing the probate court layout in the new administration building. Please do not misconstrue my position. I do not seek additional funds to modify the probate offices in the new Justice Center. I'm simply stating that the layout of the probate offices as designed for the Justice Center is not an improvement over the existing layout. Quite the contrary. The new layout, I believe, is counterproductive and counter-efficient. And you might ask me why. I would ask you to take a view, walk over to the probate court currently and take a view. The layout there is the width of the building. It is wide. We have two major counters, a counter for the marriage department and a counter for the probate. Our girls wait on each of these counters. They are close in proximity to these counters. Their walk to the counter is short. In contrast, the new layout for the probate court is lengthwise. It is long and it is narrow. There is a stairwell that butts out into the layout of the probate court. And if you view the plans of the new probate court, the girls have to sit long ways up along the edges of a wall. Their view of these.
Counters? The counters?
Counters, is obstructed. They have a longer walk, and it's just not feasible to have this court the lengthwise of a building. It needs to be in a width. The other point I would like to bring up, and I think I mentioned this in my letter of some time ago, back in November 2001. If you're a probate lawyer, senior citizen filing an estate in Lorraine County, you go to just several places, you come to the probate court, and after you get your papers from the probate court, you go downstairs to the county recorder's office. You go to the auditor's office to get your tax releases, and you go to the treasurer's office to pay your bill. The one thing all these offices have in common with the probate court, they're all in the same building. If you put us over in the new administration building, they're going to walk over to the probate court, they're going to have to come back over to this building, and then come back over to the probate court. It just doesn't seem like it's a good mix. I have had many discussions with the Architects and members of the Administration, and I've indicated, you know, from day one, I was not happy with this situation, and I would prefer to stay here in the administration building. I would think cost-wise, we could save you some money by doing so. You can leave the, you can leave the proposed probate court premises, you can just save it. And if it's such time down the future, you want to move something in there, you can do it. But I think it would be in the best interest of everyone in Lorraine County that we keep probate court right where it's at. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah? Question, Ms. Blair?
Not at this time.
Now, why do you feel that you, what's the course that's going on, why you felt you had to come here? Are you being forced to move over? Or is that the intentions that you're getting right now?
No, I got this, I received a letter in December indicating that there was no funds available to correct the layout of the proposed probate court. And I wanted to just make it sure to come here today so that there's no misconception about my plans. I really don't want money to improve the layout of the proposed probate court. That's not my intention. My intention has been from day one, please keep me here.
Okay.
And that's still my intention. I think it's in the best interest, really, to just stay here. We have a nice setup, and I'm very happy there. And I know my girls are too.
Does it matter, who should I talk to, Karen, regarding the current build-out? Does it matter whether or not that, does it disrupt the construction of the Justice Center, whether or not probate court moves? You can still continue without, it looks like Jim wants the answer for you. Okay.
I want to answer.
Well, I'll just leave that additional build-out space. Actually, the space is not build-out, it's going to be developed space. It's going to be completed and finished, as per the contracts at Millet and architectural design and engineering work that's been done. So space is going to be completed, whether it's occupied or not. I think that's the answer to your question.
I have a question, maybe Judge Zaleski, maybe you can answer this for me? It's my understanding that in the near future here, that we're looking at another position, another judge's position?
Yes.
Do you have any information on that?
My name is President Judge Ed Zaleski, Z-A-L-E-S-K-I, presently the administrative judge for the Common Pleas General Division. I'm here to support Judge Horvath from a, and the Commissioners also, I think it'd be a wise choice to leave them here. And just looking over our numbers, and I'm not here to even present any numbers to you, that's going to be prepared, I'm going to send a packet over. We're looking for an administrator, and we're looking for a secretary for the administrator, and also a new judge. At the present rate, the Common Pleas Court averages 60 criminal cases per judge in the state of Ohio. Lorraine County's at 267. That's four and a half times the amount of judges, so we're going to be here for a new judge very shortly. Now, at the present time, when we originally went to the Architects, we had two floors. We had all of the seventh floor and all of the sixth floor, with shell space on the fifth floor. Unfortunately, probate court was moved to the sixth floor. So we have four courts on the seventh floor, one of which is a visiting judges' court and a larger courtroom to be used for a trial that needs additional space. So that takes care of three of our judges, we presently have five. There's two on the sixth floor. So the brand-new judge that we get, now you open the fifth floor up for one courtroom. I don't know that you want to do that. If you leave probate court where they're at, that gives us the sixth judge there, and in the future, it gives us the seventh judge there, and it might take us 20 years to get to that fifth floor. But at the present time, you're going to send us there within the next year or two. That's what makes sense.
So the space that they're, they have in the plans now for probate court, you're thinking that that would be enough for two courts later?
Oh, it is. It is enough for two courts. Correct, because there's four courts on the seventh floor, and with him, because he has half of the sixth floor, with him removed, that leaves space for two additional courtrooms there. That gives us eight courtrooms on two floors, enough for seven judges.
That makes sense.
All right. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate you coming in. Are you looking for any support from us right now to let you, to know whether or not you're going to be moved or not? Are you looking for that?
You're looking for support, yes.
Sounds like to me, it doesn't make sense to have you guys over there, but who knows what the laws are going to be like in the next 10 years? If they force a family court, at least the space is there for you to move there. So if you have to go, then at that time, the space is already there for you. If you don't have to go, it doesn't make economic sense or efficiencies, it just, I think it, it sounds like it destroys the nice operation that you have right now.
Thank you.
So I would, I would not support the probate going over to the new center.
And I would agree.
If you're looking, if you're looking for support from the board.
Thank you.
I would agree with you.
Thank you.
Is the board going to direct the county administrator along these lines, then? I didn't know we were going to be making a decision on this issue today.
I didn't, I didn't either, but I saw that, I think the judge has been hanging since '01, it sounds like to me. And he's, then there's, as long as the building's being built out, they can move probate if they have to, then that's fine.
It's fine.
But that's fine.
You can leave it as a shell, or do what you wish with it, but you can always move probate if you decide later on.
If the mandate says we have to, and I think that's an issue that's going to be debated probably in the years to come. But right now, I guess you're looking at, whether or not the.
Stand right where I'm at. Move his own.
It sounds like that's finished, future space.
Right, it is.
So that would be less expensive in the future.
Oh, we just wouldn't have to buy any more new furniture, or build offices, finish offices, you just had to have the common areas, that's how I see it, but that's just me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to direct Jim to do anything?
No, I'm just, voice my opinion, I didn't know we were voting on anything.
Well, we're not voting, but do you want any more information on it?
No, I think I got enough from judges.
Yeah, but I think the Architects are going to need some direction. What are we doing?
I don't know, that's why I question. I didn't know we were making a decision today. I'm not prepared to make a decision one way or the other.
I would support the judges, but I think we need some direction as to what we're going to do with that space, and actually, what we're going to do with the Commissioners, because the Commissioners plan to take the space where probate is.
Oh, really?
Absolutely.
I think there's a need for some more discussion on this before we finally commit ourselves to something.
Well, I don't see the need, so.
I don't see a need for a move at this time either, but we do need some direction where we're going. So what does, what's the desire of the Board?
I already placed my opinion, so.
All right, Jim, do you want to look into it and give us some further information?
Certainly, because some of that space has clearly been laid out for distinct use of the probate court. Karen, come to the podium, please. It's my understanding that the area that probate was previously going to occupy was tailored to the probate court's needs with their clerks. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Probate court is the only court that has its clerks operating right alongside of it. The rest of the courts, domestic and common pleas, their clerks are located in the lower level, or the first floor of the Justice Center. So that's why when the judge referred to probate as taking up enough space for two courtrooms, that's where that comes from, because the probate clerks are with him on that floor. So if you, if we build a building as it is, it's going to be built with that in mind, that the clerk's space is going to be set up with all the electrical outlets and data terminals that they're going to need there.
So if there's going to be a change to not put probate court up there, which is the pleasure of the Board, we need to go back and redo that floor, we're going to have to do quite a few change orders, we're going to have to change the build-out and the layout of the floor to accommodate two courts. Right now, it's to accommodate probate court with the clerks up there. It may not sound like a significant change, but it is. All right? You don't want to build a space for one thing and then try to occupy it doing another thing, because then we're just going to have to bear that expense. So we need to go back and take a look at this.
But at this time, would that be an expense, or by eliminating the electrical and whatever is needed for his department, and just leaving it as a finished shell, would, that wouldn't, there are too much expense, would it?
No, the thing, the thing is, we would have to change the intended use of the space. If we retreated to just doing it as a finished shell, it needs to have some configuration to potential future use in that shell. Right now, that use is not the use of additional court space other than probate. Once again, I'm not trying to argue a decision with you, but there's going to be, there's going to be changes that are necessary, and the Architects need to be paid to make those changes, and we'll have to go back to all the contractors that we've had contracts with, and we will have to make change orders and get credits and get additional costs for different changes. I'm just letting you know what the process is.
Well, can you get the plan and let the Commissioners view the plan, and then some discussion in regards to, or maybe put something together in regards to what you think the cost may be, without getting the Architects involved?
No, ma'am, I can't.
Maybe eliminate certain things in their specs?
I can't do that, I don't have that expertise, nor does Karen. We need, we need the Architects to go through, look at the proposed changes. If it's intended to put a common pleas court there, we can tell them what the parameters are, obviously, and have them take a look at that and come back with some cost data, but they're going to want to be paid to do that job also.
Don't we have something where they have, in other words, electrical, so much money? John, what words am I looking for? Help me out here. How do they, how do they now give us the costs on certain items?
I'm not familiar with that process, other than the overall, but.
Are you?
Maybe you can expand the question a little bit, Commissioner, I really don't understand.
Yeah, like, okay, say the electrical, X amount of dollars, the electric for this amount of space is so much money.
Well, it's not, it's not per unit cost, the job has been costed in total, so it's not broken out by floor, or by department, or by space. So again, changes will have to be, will have to be looked at. I'm not telling you it can't be done, anything can be done, but it's not going to be as simple as just saying, "We're not going to do this."
Yeah, but now, think about this too, because if we're looking at another judge, and we have to do another floor, we have future space, but it's unfinished space, so we're going to have that expense, why not use this space?
Commissioner, do you know?
For that, because it's already included as finished space, it might be less expensive to go that way.
Commissioner, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue the merit of whether you should or should not make this change. I am only trying to tell you that there's going to be costs that are associated with this change.
I understand that.
So whether it's a beneficial change or not, it's not my position to say. My position is to carry out the directions of this Board. I just want you to understand that we're going to incur costs to do this.
Oh, I think we all understand that, but we need to know what the cost is versus what the cost would be if we were to finish the future space for the, for the future judge, which is coming up pretty shortly, from the sound of it.
Well, I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball, but the state's not in very good financial condition now, and you think they're going to be paying for another judge here? I'm not sure about how the process evolves, but there's a price tag that goes with it, and the price tag, at least a majority of the expenses for the judge goes to the state.
But sooner or later, I'm sure, I've been in Cuyahoga County for the last couple of days, and I've talked to some of the judges there, they have 36 judges already, and what do we have, seven?
Oh, we have more than that. Another question, just to refresh my memory, what floors are shell space? They're not going to be built now, what floor?
Well, there's only one floor.
Which floor?
I think it's the fifth floor, shell, shell space.
Well, and I thought that that's where you said Judge Horvath is going? I misunderstood.
I think at one time, but he's on the sixth floor now, is he not? Okay.
Okay, so he's on the sixth floor now, and what else is on the sixth floor?
Common pleas, general division.
So that floor is already half-used?
That floor is fully used, with probate court.
I'm sorry, but without probate court, it would be half-used.
Exactly.
It was not, it would not be open shell space.
Right.
Thank you.
It could be reconfigured to accommodate common pleas court, obviously.
Okay, and I see that's what you're suggesting.
But we will, we will need to go back and redesign that floor and, and make the necessary change orders and so forth to do that. It's not, all I'm indicating to you is not going to be simple as somebody not occupying the space. I'm not trying to influence your decision, I just don't want to get too much from now, and we're going to have to spend this money or that money, or pay these people, and everybody's wondering why. I just want to inform you of that right now. We can contact the Architects, we can tell them to reconsigure those floors for, similar to the way the seventh floor is configured, I would assume, but we're going to need to pay them to do that, and then we're going to need to go to all the contractors and get change orders for all that reconfiguration. We'll get some credit, and then we'll get some cost. The credits are always less than what they should be, and the costs are always more than what they should be, because we're in the middle of a project. That's the nature of changing things in the middle of a, of a project. I just want you to be aware of that.
Well, these are questions that have to be answered, though, for us to make a decision.
We would have to spend some money to be able to answer those questions, Commissioner. I can't answer those questions for you, nor can Ms. Davis, until we go back to the Architects, we give them some specific criteria, they tell us how much it's going to cost for, they'll tell us how much it'll cost for them to do that work for us. So we'll have that before we have to go forward, but they won't not, they will not be able to tell us the downstream cost until they redesign it, they'll give it to the CM, the CM will, will do a cost analysis, and then they'll go to the vendors, and they'll take quotes from the vendors as to the potential cost, and then we'll negotiate those costs. Is that usually the procedure we've been following, correct?
So, in other words, my understanding is that they don't have a breakdown of the individual construction items, however they do that, like drywall and electric and whatever? They don't have a breakdown of that? They can't just pull that stuff out and give us a cost? I mean, is it so complicated?
Is probate separate from common pleas? Is there a hallway that goes into the new design, that probate is separate from the common pleas on the sixth floor, or fifth?
Separate by a hallway?
From the, from the common pleas general division?
Well, each court is separated into its own individual area.
But is there common areas that they'll be sharing?
No, not on the court floors.
Okay. So all you're going to have is?
Maybe an elevator.
Yeah, well, I mean, are we doing this, which floor are we using that we're doing nothing, we're just going to shelf it?
Fifth floor, Commissioner.
The fifth floor, we're shelving?
Yes.
And the sixth floor is where probate's going to be, supposedly?
Yes.
Okay. So why can't we do the same thing to the, just the probate section?
I'm not saying we can't, we can do anything the Board wants, but if.
If it's already within the budget, that we're going to fix it, all we have to do is tell them not to fix it?
Well, we can tell them not to build it out.
Not to finish it.
And then we can get credit for that. But I thought I, I thought I heard that a justification for making the change was that we anticipated having another judgeship rather, rather quickly, so we're going to need that space.
Now, that's a whole other issue about bringing another judge to this county, that's a whole other issue, I don't want to go there. All I'm talking about is probate.
Commissioner, I got to be.
No, that's it, that's probate. Now, Judge Zaleski mentioned, we're going to need another judge, and then started throwing in more of a discussion I don't think we need today. I think the only discussion today is probate, and whether or not they're going to move over or not. That's the only discussion I, I thought was happening.
I will suggest that that's originally why I made my comment, that I was not prepared to make a decision today. I'm sorry.
We got you closer.
I said that that's why I made my original comment, that I was not prepared to make a decision today.
Well, I agree that the future judge is in the future, so, I mean, that, that should be eliminated from this discussion, but I would like to have some information, if you could please talk to the architect and find out what would happen if we were just to leave that shell space with finished walls.
We, we will, we will get some, some credit from the vendors, but it'll be probably about 25 cents on the dollar.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I guess what we're looking for is a, an estimation of the not move, yeah, an estimation, what's, what's the cost estimates for a, not to finish probate over in the Justice Center? That's what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay. So can we get that from the Architects?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we'll get that information?
And then that'll give us some base for a decision.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Thanks for coming back. I thought, since we were still talking, you left, I thought you'd better come back in here.
Any further questions?
No, I have none. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
in more of a discussion I don't think we needed today. I think the only discussion today is probate, and whether or not they're gonna move over or not. That's the only discussion I, I thought was happening.
I will suggest that that's originally why I made my comment, that I was not prepared to make a decision today. I'm sorry.
We got you closer.
I said that that's why I made my original comment, that I was not prepared to make a decision today.
Well, I agree that the, the future judge is in the future, so, I mean, that, that should be eliminated from this discussion, but I would like to have some information, if you could please talk to the architect, and find out what would happen if we were just to leave that shell space with finished walls.
We, we will, we will get some, some credit from the vendors, but it'll be probably about twenty-five cents on the dollar.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I guess what we're looking for is a, an estimation of the not move, yeah, an estimation, what's, what's the cost estimates for a, not to finish probate over in the Justice Center, that's what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay. So, can we get that from the architects?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we'll get that information?
And then that'll give us some base for a decision.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Thanks for coming back. I thought since we were still talking, you left, I thought you'd better come back in here.
Any further questions?
No, I have none. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
Madam Commissioner, and Commissioner Moore, I have to leave, so please excuse me, and I turn the meeting over to Vice President Blair.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, item number nine, please.
Resolution number nine, we need to authorize various personal actions as indicated on summary, for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
I'll move.
Is there something for exec on that? I'm, I'm a number nine, wasn't there an issue for executive session on personnel? Okay, we'll discuss that later, then. I'll second, number nine.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Commissioners' ad number ten, we'd authorize following reappointments and appointments to various county boards, the Lorraine County Planning Commission, need to reappoint Commissioner Blair, and her alternate, Pearl Larsec, her term would be January first, two thousand three, through December thirty-first, two thousand six. And Marita Ferguson and John Mason, their term would be January thirtieth, oh-three, to December thirty-first, two thousand five. Lorraine County Committee Improvement Corporation, that's CIC, need to reappoint Dan Tellerick, Lorraine County Treasurer. These terms are incorrect, they should read January third, oh-three, ending December thirty-first, two thousand five, instead of two thousand six. And that would also be the same for Greg White, County Prosecutor, and Ken Carney, Lorraine County Engineer. Kathy Schuster, Spitzer Management, also, January thirtieth, two thousand three, ending December thirty-first, two thousand five. And to reappoint the CIC revolving loan committee, Bruce Stevens from First Merritt Bank, term January thirtieth, two thousand three, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand five, and also Kathy Schuster from Spitzer Management, term December, excuse me, January thirtieth, two thousand three, through December thirty-first, two thousand five.
I'll move.
There's another one, too, that was given to me.
He's not on the list.
I had something you all, I didn't know if I could get it, either do I wait till that one, or do I like to get on this one? Can we hold? You haven't seen that, I just, I got it this, wow, did I get it?
I think there might be some requirement about residency. I don't know.
Can we hold this, then? At least, the planning commission part?
I think that's in addition to what's here.
Not just this part, right here. I don't mind holding this part if we vote on this part.
What I'm suggesting is that what you're talking about, oh, you're talking about a replacement for this individual?
Correct.
That's not the same as this individual?
Correct.
There's another open seat, or not an open seat, but there's a spot?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I see where you're going. So, I made a motion, and there's no second. So, it dies for a lack of second, no. What would you like to approve?
I make a motion regarding the, excuse me, Lorraine County Community Improvement Corporation appointments, or reappointments only?
I'll second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye. We need to carry those, other information forward with perhaps some different input.
Okay. Number eleven, under the airport authority, need to approve the year two thousand three, Lorraine County Regional Airport Authority funding allocations for January through March two thousand three. The payment schedule will be as follows. The first installment will be for January...
Excuse me, let me interrupt you. Is anybody here from the airport? I don't see, I won't, if there's no one here from the airport, I won't be supporting it, so. Can we hold this?
We can hold, I don't think we asked for anybody to be in attendance, I don't know. Mr. Cordes, can you speak to the issue?
I'm just trying to save you from retelling that.
We can go ahead and submit this to the regular board business, uh, next week, if they, if that's the board's desire. We had a miscommunication, or, and we shouldn't have had this on the agenda, and I have the, the account transfers and appropriations that are necessary, but we can put it into regular board business next week, it's a piece of regular action, that's the way it should've been handled.
Fine.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, buddy.
Okay, ad number twelve, in our community development department, need to award contract to Badger Construction in the amount of sixty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars for demolition of the old Brighton Township Schoolhouse. The engineer's estimate of cost was seventy-eight thousand dollars. CDBG funds will be provided in the amount of fifty-six thousand dollars, the remaining balance of ten thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars will be paid by Broughton Township. This is a fiscal year two thousand three project, this was the lowest and most responsive bid received, comes applying the specifications. The community development department in Brighton Township has reviewed and recommends approval.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Number thirteen, I'd like to advertise request for qualifications and proposals for Lorraine County's fiscal year two thousand three, community housing improvement program, that's the CHIP application preparation, the CHIP grant, administration implementation, and community housing improvement strategy update for fiscal year two thousand four. The RFQ and proposals will be received until Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand three, at four P.M. in the purchasing department. I'd like to authorize the present to execute on behalf of the board, and publish this notice in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on February third and tenth, two thousand three.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Number fourteen, we need to authorize private owner rehabilitation assistance on behalf of Sarita Havens, who resides in Ellyria Township. Ms. Havens is requesting assistance through the community development department for repairs consisting of exterior gutters and doors, plumbing repairs, bathroom upgrades, furnace replacement, and electric rewiring. Illyria City Council, I have to give approval for the Havens to be connected to the city's water service. The city of Illyria Utilities is requesting a payment in the amount of four thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and forty-six cents for the following fees associated with this water connection. The capital recovery fee, three thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-one cents, the one-inch tap-in fee, eight hundred, six dollars and twenty-five cents, and the three-quarter inch meter fee, one hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents. The maximum amount allowable through the CHIP program to Ms. Havens for all these repairs, including the water connection, is twenty-five thousand dollars. The community development department will request approval of the remaining repairs when a successful visitor has been secured.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes, I believe, Ron.
Commissioners, if I may, Ron Twining, Community Development Director, T.W.I.N.I.N.G., this one is a little unusual, and I want to explain it, these folks, the Havens live in Illyria Township, but they're close to water service, they had been serviced at that residence by an existing in-ground well, that well has dried up, they are continuing to pay their taxes and mortgage, but have had to literally move out of the house. In order to do the work that's necessary on this project, the first thing they have to do is get water hookup. The city of Illyria has recently approved the, the hookup, but want authorization from us to pay them for the necessary fees, and that's what we're authorizing today, the four thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and forty-six cents. We have gone out for bid, and are going out a second time to get a more competitive bid for the remainder of the work that will not exceed twenty-five thousand. These are income-eligible folks, the house is in a situation that it needs to be upgraded, but it's going to come to you in two parts. The first part, this connection to the city water service, and the second part, an actual contract recommendation with a contractor, and I just wanted the opportunity to explain what we're doing and why we're doing it. I'll answer any questions, Commissioners may have.
Do you have other questions, Commissioner Moore?
No.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Number fifteen, to approve the enterprise zone tax abatement agreement between the city of North Ridgeville and Summit Tool Company. Summit Tool Company is desirous of relocating and manufacturing operations from Michigan to the city, and will be adding additional machines, tools, and dyes, equipment, furniture, fixtures, and inventory. This project will involve a total investment of approximately four million, two hundred thousand dollars at the site, at three-four-nine-nine-nine Mills Road, North Ridgeville, Ohio. Summit Tool Company will create forty new full-time permanent job opportunities. This abatement is requested for a ten-year period for the new tangible personal property, and personal property improvements made to the site, in the total amount of two million, seven hundred thousand dollars. The city of North Ridgeville Council has approved by ordinance number nine-sixty-four dash two thousand three, and the North Ridgeville City Schools and Lorraine County GBS have been officially notified.
Mr. Twining?
I just wanted to provide a little bit of information to the Commissioners before they take action on this. This is a tax abatement agreement that has been worked out between the company, the city of North Ridgeville, it has been approved by the city of North Ridgeville, and is in front of the Commissioners for action today. Concerning that, in the resolution, it did hit the highlights, they are making a four-point-two million dollar investment in building machinery and equipment, it is a relocation from Michigan to Ohio. We are pleased to say that. They will commence construction in or about April first, two thousand and three, and will complete construction in December thirty-first, two thousand four. The facility is proposed to be located on Mills Road in North Ridgeville. You did hear the level of abatements, there is a total annual payroll of seven hundred thousand dollars, forty jobs that are committed to being created over a two-year period. Today, we also have Rebecca Jones from our department that has worked with the city of North Ridgeville on this, and, and getting it in front of the Commissioners. We also have Jim McVeigh from the city of North Ridgeville, if you have any particular questions regarding the city's project.
So, City Council passed this?
Yes, it did.
When was that? Last night?
Um, January twenty-first, January twenty-first, two thousand and three, they approved the, the agreement by resolution, the city resolution number nine-six-four dash two-zero-zero-three.
What is the percentage of the abatement?
First year is a hundred percent, the second year's ninety-five percent, third year is ninety percent, years four through ten then is eighty percent.
Thank you.
So, the abatement's just on their, their inventory, pretty much? Personal property is just their inventory, correct?
Yeah, the additional equipment, machinery, tools, tool and die equipment, furniture, furnishings, and inventory.
Mr. McVeigh, did you want to have some comments this morning?
Jim McVeigh from the city of North Ridgeville. I just wanna add also that the company has agreed to make a contribution annually to our schools on the same sliding scale, starting with ten thousand the first year, ninety-five hundred, nine thousand, and eight thousand. And we do have an agreement with the schools where we also share our income tax received from payroll, fifty percent goes to the schools.
Thank you for that information. Rebecca, did you have anything further to add?
She was going to add that both schools have been notified in accordance with law, and a question that typically comes up is what we have affectionately referred to the York Clause, and that is in there, as is the requirement for the annual fee. Mr. Ennis has reviewed this and made sure that those documents are in there, which are the typical request of the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, do you have any further questions, Commissioner Moore?
Yeah, when can the whole county be a tax abatement-free zone? We'll have more jobs that way, I figured, you know?
Only when they're coming from Michigan.
That's okay, if that, I'll, I'll go up and toot that horn all day long.
Why, you recruited these people.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure it's the marketing that Ron has effectively put together, that probably, the regional marketing probably helped that, right, Ron?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you.
If there are no further questions, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Another discussion, Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Under the county engineer, number sixteen, I'd like to authorize the posting of low limit signs that state weight limit reduction by twenty-five percent on various county roads for the thaw and moisture period, in accordance with Ohioir Vice Code, section fifty-five, seventy-seven point zero seven, effective February first, two thousand three, through May first, two thousand three.
I'll move.
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Number seventeen, I'd like to reappoint Kenneth Carney as representative for the Board of Commissioners to the Lorco Board of Trustees, effective March twenty-seventh, two thousand three, expiring March twenty-seventh, two thousand six. Sorry.
That's okay. I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Number eighteen, I'd like to authorize county engineer to proceed by force account for normal and general maintenance and repairs during two thousand three on county roads for the safety of the traveling public.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, what's, since Ken's here. Ken, do you want to discuss this issue, or what's force account? Says here that to proceed by force account? You could've yelled it out if you wanted to.
Oh, no, we told him, he come to have to come to the microphone.
No, he's all dressed up and everything, why not at least get him up?
He did a special.
Yeah.
Actually, I came to discuss the old business. Ken Carney, county engineer, three-two-nine-five-five-eight-six. The force count is what we do on a, on an employee basis, permits us to expend funds in an efficient manner in regards to other individual companies that would do that also. So, we don't have to bid for those particular projects when we do, when we do that construction and house. One of those examples would be chip and seal, and ditch replacements, and tie-ling, that type of activity.
So, then you'd have to go out and bid, then? Is that what that, this means?
It's a year, all engineers do this, we're limited to a certain amount of money per mile, we retain our, our activity within that certain limit. And I believe we're looking aggressively to increase that limit this year in the, in the state legislature.
Legislature, yes.
Because our prices go up, our salaries go up, which means we do less per mile.
Okay.
And we push it to the limit, so that we get more done cheaply with our own forces.
What is the maximum per mile now?
I think it's fifty.
Fifty thousand?
Well, I think it's fifty, well, let's see, I think it's five thousand per mile on a certain type of construction we have available to us. There's a limitation for a length of time for that particular year. Jerry could, sorry, Jerry.
Well, you had it at your fingertips, that's all.
I was here for old business, my dear.
Sorry, Ken.
And then the question isn't necessary, thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Number nineteen, I'd like to accept on behalf of the Columbia Township Trustees, the improvements for sixteen lots, accepting the maintenance guarantee agreement for a period of one year, Cobblestone number one subdivision developer, Dave Hill. The county engineer and Columbia Township trustees have inspected the improvements and recommend approval. The plat for Cobblestone number one subdivision is recorded, and Lorraine County record of plats is follows. Cobblestone Trail with number T dash two-seventy-two extending westerly from Jake Way Road at T-one-thirty-eight, a distance of one thousand, three hundred ninety-five feet, or zero point two sixty-four miles. And Sandstone Trail, number T dash two-seventy-three extending northerly and westerly from Cobblestone Trail, and number two-seventy-two, a distance of nine hundred fifty-five feet, or zero point one eighty-one miles.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Lorraine County Board of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities, number twenty, have a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for the benefit of mentally retarded and developmentally disabled children and adults of Lorraine County, for the purpose of providing facilities, programs, and services for Murray Ridge Center by operating Murray Ridge School, the workshops, community-based employment and residential facilities, and making capital improvements on the buildings of Murray Ridge Center. The rate is not to exceed one point six eight seven five mils for each one dollar evaluation, which amounts to sixteen and seven eight cents for each one hundred dollars evaluation, for a period of five years pursuant to Ohioir Vice Code, section fifty-seven, zero-five, point nineteen-L. This is a renewable levy and shall be placed on the ballot for the May sixth, two thousand three primary election. I was reading something, primary election.
Dr. Painter, do you have comments for the board this morning?
Ellen Painter, Superintendent of the Lorraine County Board of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners. I would just like to say that we would appreciate your consideration of placing our levy on the ballot. This levy will generate, according to the auditor, approximately $8 million a year, and that would represent about 25 percent of our budget. And it is a renewal levy, and we hope that we'll be able, in light of all the cuts that we are hearing about, to be able to continue the services that we now offer.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Questions?
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
And number 21, much awarded contract to Jean Reeser Incorporated in the amount of $47,941.30 for the MRDD Illyria Workshop Kitchen Renovations Project. This work is necessary to upgrade the facilities to meet the Health Department requirements for food preparation activities. This was the lowest and most responsive bid received, compliant with specifications. Need to add this information. We need to approve the account and fund transfers within the corresponding Q Construction accounts for the said contract.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Reports, comments, Mr. Cordez, Administrator?
I only have one quick issue. Commissioners, I appreciate you approving that bid for the MRDD. We need to transfer some money to make sure we have available funds to pay for that. Had the Budget Department prepared those for your signature, I would request that you just add them to the package.
Didn't we just vote on those two, though?
You did. Did you add that on today?
Yeah.
Well, it shows you what I was paying attention, sorry. That'll complete that issue. Other than that, I have nothing additional this morning. Thank you.
Assistant County Prosecutor, Mr. Ennis?
I just need a very short executive session to update the Commission on Legal Matter of Litigation. We will not be seeking any official action on it, though.
Commissioners' report? Commissioner Moore?
Um, oh, boy. My oldest daughter's school is doing a Pennies for Patients. Pennies for Patients is a fundraiser conducted by the Northern Ohio Chapter of the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society to help out our neighbors and friends who struggle with blood-related cancers. This fundraiser is also sponsored by Mandy Moore, the National Chairperson. My daughter will be collecting now through February 21st. The money will really help and add up to make a difference. Each year, nearly 1,000 people in Northern Ohio are diagnosed with leukemia, lymphoma or related cancer. With the medical treatment, many will recover. Unfortunately, others will not. And with your help, we'll continue to meet the patients' needs. My daughter wrote this up for me. She's really, really wants to help out. They're doing a fundraiser at Nord Junior High. It's a statewide campaign, and I'll have a penny collection at my Administrator's desk here in the county if anybody'd like to help her out. So, I had, she spent, she was up last night trying to say, "Dad, can you help me? Can you help me?" And I said, "Sure, I'll see what I can do." But you have to write the speech, dear. So, she did it. I think she did a good job, so. Number two, question for my county administrator, Mr. Cordez. I've been getting some phone calls on some possible changes in the county. If you could help me find out what's going on regarding the mail services, or something, I got some calls because somebody sent some letters out to some mayors that there's some changes in the mail system at the county, and I had some other calls from people within the county wondering what's going on with the way that we distribute mail in the county. Something doesn't, there was a policy change, and I said, "I really don't know what's going on, so I'll ask Jim." It's regarding the distribution of mail. Does it make sense? Does it sound familiar?
I have nothing, I have no idea what, how anything would be affecting any cities or mayors or anybody else.
I don't know.
Nor do I, Commissioners. There's some procedural issues with respect to our departments that we're dealing with, but that has no external effect on anybody, so I have no clue. We can go back and take a look, but I would need some more specific information of where they even begin.
Well, the, let's give an example, Golden Acres, they have to drive in to get their mail instead of having it delivered to them?
We never delivered the mail to Golden Acres, and Golden Acres comes here every day. They have come here almost every day for the last 20 years.
And EMA has to drive in now? Because that's where I got the call from, was EMA from the mayors regarding the EMA has to drive in to collect their mail.
I certainly appreciate the mayor's concern for business. That doesn't, shouldn't concern them, but the, the, uh...
They're looking out for us for lawsuits for people driving to collect mail instead of just waiting for the US Postal to deliver it to them, so...
The post office didn't deliver mail to EMA. EMA picks up their mail from our mailroom downstairs. It's why we run a centralized mailroom, and we have employees down there in the centralized mailroom. I'm not quite sure what the mayor's concern would be, what the procedures for picking up mail with the EMA agency is.
You didn't send the memo out to the mayors?
No, sir, I did not.
So, it was a memo that went to the mayors regarding the change in procedures at the county.
Well, I'd be interested to take a look at that.
Well, I'll see if I can get a copy of it, but, so what has, has there been something that's changed? Because I'm getting a lot of grumblings about it. Or nothing, everything's been the same for the last 20 years? Nothing's changed in the last couple of weeks?
As I indicated to you, I'm having our agencies pick up their mail from our mailroom.
From our mailroom?
Yes.
When did that go into effect?
It should've been in effect all along. It's just been reinforced in the last few weeks.
The last few weeks? So, what's that mean? Like, people from Job and Families have to come here, or what?
Job and Families, given the volume that they handle, they have their own mail, centralized mailroom within Job and Families. They always have had their own mailroom within Job and Families.
So, who has, so why am I hearing rumblings about people coming in here and having to pick up mail, which I've never heard before in at least the two years I was here?
Completely bewildered by that, Commissioner. Apparently, some people don't like change, and they would rather subvert it than to cooperate with it.
So, what do we change?
As I indicated to you, we have the agencies making sure that they're picking up their mail through our centralized mail distribution center downstairs.
What was done beforehand, though?
I understand that some of the mail was being picked up external to that.
External, like, what do you mean?
That they may have been picking it up at the post office, or may have been dropped in other areas.
You mean, delivered to Golden Acres directly?
Golden Acres had a P.O. box. It was not delivered to Golden Acres.
Right, but now they have to go to, to pick up their mail here, right?
That's not correct, sir. Golden Acres is maintaining their P.O. box because they get mail that is for the residents at Golden Acres, so...
Correct.
That mail goes to the P.O. box because it's more efficient.
Which is right outside his window. I mean, only about a hundred yards away.
Right, right. But that P.O. box is still being maintained there for residential, for resident mail.
Okay, so, so what has changed? Who is, who is being affected? Why is all of a sudden, I'm hearing rumblings where people feel that they have to waste time coming up to pick up mail, where before, the way it was, the way it was delivered to me, was they have to now come and pick it up?
Well, let me, let me...
No, no, I'm just saying, they used to have to come and pick it up, or it used to be, it used to be delivered to them, now they have to come pick it up.
Delivered by whom, Commissioner Moore?
I don't know, that's what I'm trying to find out. Who, why am I hearing it from all, you know, grumblings from people? Why would people...
Commissioner...
Whether or not the mayors are calling me up, or they're calling up friends and trying to lobby me, who knows, you know?
Well, it's very...
I'm just trying to find out.
Well, actually, to be honest, which is very disconcerning to me, okay? You know, the issue is how the mail comes from agencies that are clearly, under the county administrator's charge, should not be any business of anybody outside this agency. Now, if they're, if our supervisor aren't happy with the procedures, they have, they have a meeting and they can voice those concerns.
Okay.
And if the Board of Commissioners wants to take up the issue of how mail should be delivered, I will certainly follow any directions this board gives me.
Okay. I'll get more details and bring it up to be continued. That's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore.
Thanks.
I want to know if Paula's got a big penny jar?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good. I'd just like to report on the charrette that the Lorraine County Visitors Bureau held last evening. Last week, I reported that they were going to have one.
A what?
A charrette, I think it's called. I'm sorry, maybe I shouldn't use that terminology.
Is that right?
Sure, it's...
Okay.
Well, I'm looking to see if that's what it said in the letter, but at any rate, the Visitors Bureau hosted a meeting last night, and the letter of invitation said, "Many things have changed in the tourism industry for many reasons. Changing travel patterns has forced us all to rethink our marketing efforts. In the past year, the travel industry of America states 87 percent of their members are making changes to marketing and/or promotion programs. Well, now it's our turn to try, wrap our arms around the evolution that is taking place." And to that end, Pat Kano, Executive Director of the Visitors Bureau, announced that we were partnering with John Carroll University to develop a new marketing plan for Lorraine County Visitors Bureau. So, I wanted to step off from that meeting last night to say that there were about 40 people that were in attendance there, and we were each given a copy of the new Lorraine County Events Calendar. This is for the entire year, and it talks about, it gives information about all the festivals that are going on in Lorraine County, which was mentioned as one of the strengths of our county during this focus group visioning process. And I spoke to Sandy Strosec this morning, Mr. Cordez's administrative assistant, who is correlating our bicentennial participation for the county, and that's also being worked on through the Lorraine County Visitors Bureau, the Lorraine County Historical Society, and the Metropolitan, Lorraine County Metropolitan Parks. And it's my understanding that the Metroparks French Creek Reservation will be home to this wonderful display that they're putting together, starting April the 11th through June 8th. And since it's kind of snowy outside and we don't have all other good things to talk about, I wanted to talk about something that's coming up that's going to be nice for our county, including the tall ship spectacle that's coming to the, both the Lorraine Port and in Vermillion on July 18th to 20th. So, that's kind of my report. I want to tell you, I've been working on having a big party.
Good.
Thanks. Madam Clerk?
Under old business? Item number one, need to instruct clerk to publish a construction services public announcement to contract for services in connection with the widening of Griswold Road to three lanes in Larry, Ohio. Engineering firms interested in being considered for a contract to provide the required services should reply with a statement of qualifications, no later than 2:00 p.m. on March 7th. Statements received after this deadline will not be considered. As required by Ohio Vice Code Section 153.65 through 71, responding firms will be evaluated and ranked in order of their qualifications. Following this evaluation, Lorraine County Engineers Office will enter into contract negotiations with the most highly qualified firm. Total project budget is $2,138,122.
Mr. Cordez, this item was on the agenda last week, and you were going to speak to the Engineers Office about correlating sewer and this project.
I spoke to the Engineers Office. Mr. Carney's here, and I also sent correspondence to the City of Valeria, specifically to Safety Service Director Roth Gary, requesting that we meet immediately to discuss the board's desire to reach an agreement to get a contract to service this area from the City of Valeria. Currently, only a few yards of the road fall within the Illyria's service area for sewer-ing, and that portion of the road is in the City of Valeria. The rest of the road is within the township, and there is no service agreement to sewer that road right now, although it is in the JED. Jerry, correct, Griswold Road there is in the JED that's coming before the electorate in May again. As you know, that issue was defeated in November. So, I've asked that we meet and we get some kind of agreement that if we get the funding for the road, we also have an agreement in hand that says we can put sewers on that road. Absent that, we don't have the ability to put a sewer on that road.
Mr. Carney, you have comments on this?
Yes, Mr. Cordez, and I talked briefly this morning. My office is willing to wait a short period of time so that these meetings can take place. And there was a question last week that I didn't attend the meeting last week, but there was a question you had on the, on the construction techniques. I wouldn't, don't worry about that. We have, we're well-prepared to construct anything there is in a, in a, in a sound fashion. So, the, if the public or anyone thinks that there's going to be a sewer ripping up the new road, that's never going to happen. But we're in agreement with Mr. Cordez for a short period of time that we would like to see agreements with the City of Valeria, and we have correspondence through my office over to them. We expect a ordinance passed for a feeling of cooperation to permit ourselves to work within their right-of-way, and Jim's working on the concept of a sewer permission. So, we're willing to wait for a short period of time before we like to get our federal funding in line for this. This is another one of those 80 percent fed, 20 percent state projects, so...
Which we love. What is the timeframe for you proceeding so that we can move backwards? When, when do we have to make a decision so that you'll be timely with your plans, et cetera?
This is, what we have on the agenda is only a publication of a, an announcement to contract for services, and that's the first step of a four-step process to begin engineering.
So, are you suggesting that we could proceed with this, and in the meantime, the other things will dovetail and fall into place?
Oh, yes, that's entirely possible, but Jim's working on something, and he'll be more than happy to attend this meeting again next week.
Is that going to mess up our, your bidding, though, if it's going to, if we're going to change and require sewer work, or...
No, it's just a short, no, no, not at all. Just a short delay.
Okay.
No. I won't miss any deadlines for federal funding applications through the TAC Council.
I didn't ask that. What I'm asking is, if you're going to advertise for 2.1, and it's going to cost us 2.8 because we're adding sewers to the project?
You, Commissioner, you wouldn't be able to add the sewers to...
You wouldn't be able to do that?
No, the sewers would be, would be a separate project we would undertake through the sanitary engineers department with Mr. Carney acting as a sanitary engineer.
Well, put on your sanitary engineer hat, then. Would we be able to lie in, lie in pipe at the same time as we're doing this?
No problem.
That's what I like to hear.
No problem. And there'll be no problem installing this sewer one year after the road's done, too.
Well, my question is, how do you do that?
No problem.
If you're in the road right-of-way, where are you going to lay the sewer? I mean, if you've got pavement.
It's a three-lane road within a 60-foot right-of-way. We've got plenty of room. Sidewalk probably on one side, per the request of the Lorraine Township Trustees. We'll be putting in, we call them naked sleeves underneath the pavement, so when there's a lateral coming in, we'll just slip right through without disturbing anybody.
So, in other words, even if we proceed with this project and we are not authorized to do the sewers, at this time, a future authorization would not impair the new pavement?
Absolutely no problem whatsoever. We'll do it every year.
How about the homeowners, though? Will we be digging up their yards?
We'll put the connection to the right-of-way line, which is two foot behind the sidewalk. They can connect at any point in time, and generally, that whole, that whole Griswold Road's 80 percent business.
Other questions?
It's not that difficult.
I know, I'm just saying, if we're digging up the yards, the roads, are we, I'd like to see them being both done at the same time, that's all.
I think that's good planning.
We're working on that with Mr. Cordez very strongly.
Cool.
Very good, okay. Well, then, I'll move that we proceed with the publishing of the construction services public announcement.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
And encourage those meetings to continue. Thank you.
Any other old business?
None.
I have none.
Under any business, we discuss the Justice Center. Any other new business?
None.
I have none.
Board correspondent?
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Other comment?
At this time, the board affords an opportunity for anyone who wishes to address us, bearing in mind that we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. Come to the microphone, please, and state your name.
This has been written years ago. Those who not feel pain do not believe that others feel pain. In the recent past, in this room, we have heard of the pain felt by the recent increase in health benefits. I myself received an increase in pay, but the take-home is less. That's at the federal level. Upper echelons do not feel the pain as much as the lower echelons. To manage or not to manage, that is the question. Last week, I spoke of management not acting on a minor roadway water problem. Perhaps a thaw will allow this to be apparent to supervision, and they will have labor alleviate the problem. That's on Chestnut Ridge. It's frozen now, I doubt if they can do much, but it would be nice if they did take care